Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up, we have a roll call, please.
Council President Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember Corman.
Here.
We'll call Mr. Mayor Juan absent. I believe she's here, but...
She's trying to make her way in, yes.
Okay. We'll give her a second. Or I could move on to the admin report if you wish.
Yeah, let's go ahead and start the admin report.
Okay, the admin report, I have two items, Mr. Mayor. The first, the city of Renton has received federal CARES Act funding from the Washington State Department of Commerce to assist small businesses adversely impacted by COVID-19. Grants will be made in amounts up to $15,000 to qualifying businesses that have a Renton business license and are a for-profit business, not a franchise or national chain, have a physical location within Renton with a public-facing storefront, have 25 or fewer employees, including the owner, have been in operation in the city of Renton for at least two years, and have experienced a revenue loss due to COVID-19-related business closures. The application process will close at 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, July 30. For application assistance, you can call 206-503-1742 or email thrive@rentonwa.gov. That's T-H-R-I-V-E at rentonwa.gov. And then additionally, the city is distributing face masks free to residents to help combat the spread of COVID-19. Distribution will take place every Wednesday and Thursday through the end of July or for as long as supplies last. Mask distribution will take place at Renton Community Center, which is 1715 Maple Valley Highway from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesdays and 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. on Thursdays. Residents are asked to drive to the building's main entrance, and each vehicle will receive two, five mask packets. There will be no proof of residence required, and we ask that you only pass through once. Renton seniors picking up lunches at the Renton Senior Activity Center as part of the senior lunch program will also receive masks. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Will you please note that Councilmember Benedetti is with us now?
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, next, we will open the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. However, the city reserves the right to eliminate or end these public comment periods and/or remove anyone from the meeting at any point if we deem the system as being abused or is no longer suitable to allowing the city to conduct its necessary business. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You'll be called upon by Julia Medzignian, council liaison. Ms. Medzignian will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker. You have been unmuted. This is the speaker's cue that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see the timer on the screen. When your time is almost up, please wrap up your comments. Ms. Medzignian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have seven speakers signed up to speak in advance. First up on the list is Linda Smith. Linda, you'll have to unmute. There you go.
Okay, I'm here. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Linda Smith, Renton resident. And we believe that for the city to continue to move forward and towards equality and equity for blacks and indigenous and other people of color, we need to pass an ordinance or resolution for ending structural racism and achieving racial equality and equity in all areas in the city of Renton. I'm here tonight, as in the past, and that is to continue to bring a light, bring a voice to passing injustices and racism that have severely impacted the lives of black and indigenous people for many centuries in this country. We're at a pivotal moment, a movement in our community and all across this nation. It is the time to bring about equality for blacks and indigenous people and people of color. I am grateful tonight for the past work with the chief, Ed Van Billy, his staff at Renton Police Department, with the black and African-American communities and other communities. We have made some great strides on building police relationships. I feel good about it. But not all members of our community feel the same, as I do, which means that there is much progress yet to be done. I appreciate Councilmember Corbin's comments tonight and the community as a whole, that we can learn from the past by having open and transparent conversations with the community, which is what will build trust even more. In June, the King County Board of Health passed a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. And it further stated that the strain of racism that black, indigenous, and other people of color in our community live with every day leads to differences in health, education, housing, and it has wreak havoc on their lives. We are aware and appreciate the ordinance on the agenda tonight regarding ending structural racism and the work that is being done to enact that here in Renton. As a resident in the city and unrest around racial division and black lives, the language must be intentional. We must address the injustice of racial disparity that have impacted black lives and indigenous people in our city. To absent that language, optimize inclusion and equity for all. We're here today because 400 years of injustice that have maimed and disfigured the lives of black bodies and soul are America for too long. Yes, every time we witness a George Floyd, a Breonna Taylor, it stirs up the fear all over again. And we've been mindful of the unrest in the country. While we have had protests in Renton and various communities, we've had many black lives from Renton protesting in Seattle because they feel that black lives were not included or safe in the city of Renton. I believe that is why it is critical that any ordinance that we propose must include the intentional language of naming black, indigenous, and people of color. To absent the names, to remain silent on issues of justice and a continuation of marginalization of their lives. To name them is as important as the recognition of the land that we stand on tonight, the Wamish land. We're here tonight because we believe that while good work has been done, more must be done to ensure equal seating at the table, which will then create inclusion, and then, yes, all lives will matter. We're here tonight because we believe that black lives, indigenous people, people of color lives matter as well. As elected officials, we elected you to care for the whole of the community. To absent black lives and indigenous people from any language says you do not care about all of us, all of the community. Therefore, we believe the city budget would also be reflected of the values of all residents. We believe we must equalize access to transforming the lives of our community by funding programs. We're therefore asking to create the Equity and Empowerment Commission. Number two, to create anti-racist budget by directing revenues to social services and basic needs. Meet 50% black and people of color employment and contracting. Again, thank you for passing an ordinance or resolution to ending structural racism and creating a budget that builds a path to achieving racial equity for black lives, indigenous, and people of color. Mr. Mayor, city council elected official, we as a community are counting on you to do the right thing and look forward to witnessing your commitment being lived out in the community. Thank you.
Ms. Medzignian?
Krista, go ahead.
I'd like to yield my time to Joseph Todd. Thank you.
Mr. Todd, go ahead.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mayor and councilmembers, first, we are here because of civil unrest perpetuated by the treatment of black Americans across this country. Second, true equity conversations and frameworks lead with race and policy development because racial inequities persist in every system across the country without exception. There is not one example in my research of a system where there are no racial disparities in outcome, whether it's health, education, criminal justice, employment, and so on. Braced into the creation and ongoing policies of our government, media, and other institutions unless otherwise countered, racism operates at individual, institutional, and structural levels and is therefore present in every system. And I and researchers, I and other researchers have examined. Mayor, councilmembers, you might say, what about income, gender, sexuality, education, ability, age, citizenship, and geography? I note in all of these that inequity based on race. This is why race is the focus of true diversity and inclusion programs. When you focus on the role that race plays in people's experiences and outcomes, all both float. And that is why the resolution that we're asking that's being looked at in pass tonight, that it includes black lives in the resolution called out in a paragraph to make sure that we're including those black lives in this community. Thank you.
Hey, the next person I have signed up to speak is Larry Gossett. Mr. Gossett, if you're in the audience, could you raise your hand if you're calling in star nine? Okay, I don't see him. Oh. Mr. Gossett, are you 1554?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh-huh. And I wanted to have the opportunity to speak to the Renton City Council Resolution 44.
He was muted, Julie.
Oh, unmuted, okay. Did you hear that? I'd like to speak to the resolution that the two previous speakers have spoken to, Ms. Smith and Joseph.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I've been working with them, as well as many others, over the last six or seven months as we've worked diligently to build what we are calling the King County Renton Racial Equity Coalition, which is a broad base of community organizations and individuals that has grown out of the significant Black Lives Matter movement in our broad community. I do understand, however, that I'm speaking to Renton City Council on tonight, and I am familiar with the history of black folks who have resided in history, starting way back, I think, in the 1880s with Black Folks' Feltly in the Renton Highlands area. And then after 1960, moving into other low-income working-class neighborhoods in Renton. I am also aware that the black population in Renton is about 13%, 15%, somewhere in there. That is, that doesn't bother me because that's twice the percentage of blacks. We died in Martin Luther King County, where I served, as most of you know, as a council member for 25 years. And though the black population in King County was just below 6%, we were able frequently to target assistance to it as well as to other minority and disadvantaged groups throughout the county population. Because anytime any scientific objective analysis is done in the area of employment, wealth, differential, access to health, educational achievement, in every important arena of human life in our county and in every community of King County, disparity has continued to exist, which is the reason that I believe that as a result of the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota, finally, that we've had a tremendous outpouring of support for our society to focus more effectively on institutionalized and structural racism as it carries out policies, whether they be based on implicit or overt bias in all of our communities, including Renton. When I was on the King County Council, I represented Seattle All-Away Path, you know, to the end of Lakewood. And I always, for the whole 25 years, represented part or all of Skyway, which the Renton School District serves. So, because of that, I had occasion frequently, about four times in 2019, going to meetings with black and other third-world people in the South Seattle and Renton area and talking about concerns and differentials. So, I don't know how much time I have left. I want to end by saying I have carefully read your Resolution 4414. And I, as a longtime politician myself, believe with you all that it is a very good start, as Ms. Smith mentioned a little earlier, in the right direction, all through it, ending racism, combating figuring out how your city, our city, Renton, can combat individual and collective racism is mentioned. So, I see a path that that can be reinforced in just about every major effort for community improvement that you make in the future, and I applaud that. But like the two previous speakers, I really think for the African-American community, it would be helpful. It would be better. It's good as it is, but it would be better if there were an explicit, whereas in the resolution that spoke more directly to something that will easily help black people and other disadvantaged people who reside in your community look at and think about the kind of repairs, the damage repairs that are needed in the community. I'd just like to close...
Mr. Gossett, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Yes, yes. I'd just like to close by saying that the... I'm particularly concerned about the unemployment gapping in King County. I don't really know specifically what it is in Renton. And the income differential is pretty great in Seattle. Average income, $93,000. And white households, average black household income, $33,000. I would suspect it's not much different in Renton. And I look forward to working with the community organizations. And you as being members of the Renton City Council in the future at implementing some of the creative ideas that will come out of discussion on this resolution tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, next I have Sarah Howar. Go ahead, Ms. Howar.
Hi, this is Sarah Howar. I'm a city of... My husband and I are 14-year Renton residents. Our children attend schools in Renton School District. I am a pediatric occupational therapist with a specialty in children and youth with autism and anxiety. Currently, I get to work for Renton School District. I have also been a small business owner in Renton. And I've worked for three other therapy agencies in King County that serve the city of Renton. I have spent my time on the floors and in the homes of families all over King County and all over Renton, serving their students, serving families with kids with special needs. I am so appreciative of the important work that I see the city of Renton is doing to engage in ending structural racism. While I currently work in Renton School District, I'm proud that we are also doing some of that work, important work to end structural racism. I want to tell you about two 15-year-old boys. My nephew, he's 15, he's six foot and growing. He's huge. He has the best one-liners, and they often arrive two seconds too late. He has a walking Harry Potter encyclopedia. He has an invisible disability, autism and anxiety, that he is impacted by. He has a history of being so upset and confused and misunderstood that he threw his shoes at his teachers that were trying to help him. When he holds it together all day at school, he gets in the car, climbs into the backseat, and strips off all his clothes to reset his day. Because you reset your day by getting dressed in the morning. With his aunt, I have been able to trust the special education laws and the laws that are in place in the city to protect him. He is white, so am I. But I want to tell you about another boy, very similar. He's one of my students in Renton School District. I've changed some pieces just to make sure that his information stays confidential. He is 15, he is also six foot and growing. He is huge. He is a walking history book. And when you take extra time to listen, he provides light and insight that have changed my life. He has a recent history of holding it all together. He occasionally escalates. He also has, you know, this is my name. He is not, he is black. As one of his therapists at school, working together with his parents, I have come to understand the fear this family lives with. And they have been able to trust the special education law or the laws of duty that are currently in place. I cannot take away his autism. I can address his anxiety, do it with a team of people. Their fear is that their son would be restrained. I don't live with that fear for my nephew. When students have really gene bursts, that in the community can be very confusing. We need ordinances, laws, and police and community members that are educated in understanding autism, anxiety, mental health, and recognizing no matter the color of your skin. All lives do matter when we are intentional about our language. I would like to ask that the city considers language that includes and provides equity, specifically naming black, indigenous, and people of color in the ordinances that we consider passing, so that when we raise these groups of people up, all lives will matter. Thank you.
Next registered to speak is Anson Huang. Mr. Wong, go ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you for the work you are doing dismantling structural racism here in our city. While Resolution Number 4414 is the correct pathway forward, it is lacking in some areas that we must be more intentional and transparent when we discuss the racial disparities affecting black, indigenous, and people of color in our city. As a recent graduate of Renton High School, caused in 2019, I've seen firsthand how these disparities put racial minorities at a disadvantage. From lower test scores and higher free-reduced sludge rates, especially compared to our Lindbergh and Hazen colleagues, it's clear how past policies and a long legacy of neglect and injustices have led to the realities we see today. This last summer, I volunteered with the communities of schools in Renton and Sequoia and gave free back-to-school haircuts to low-income students at Liberty Park. It was not a coincidence. Many of these folks are people of color and are disproportionately black and indigenous. Inclusion and equity aren't just buzzwords. They are words that are full of hope. They are words that hold the promises of a better future for all. By excluding language that sufficiently highlights the racial disparities and injustices our black communities face undermines the struggle for justice for all people. Thank you.
Okay, next I have signed up to speak David Pierce. I don't see Mr. Pierce. If you're in the audience, Mr. Pierce, could you raise your hand either on your computer or by pressing star nine? Okay. Next I have raised hand Winter Cashman. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, I just came here tonight. I wanted to amplify what many of the previous speakers said in ensuring that this resolution includes language which specifically addresses the inequities and hardships that have been faced by black and indigenous people of color. And I also wanted to add, reading through the resolution, I agree with the previous speakers that we could also use more language that helps us identify areas where we are struggling to address and things that we need to address. And specifically, I want to say the name Tony McDay tonight, who is one of the people this year who is transgender and black and was murdered in Tennessee. And I say his name specifically because in our resolution, while sexual orientation is addressed, gender identity and expression or not, which are specifically class protections for transgender and non-binary communities. Thinking to last week, the name Summer Taylor, who was a white ally at a black femmes protest who was murdered by a hitting car last week in Seattle. And I say these names specifically because saying their names is what will help us bring them justice. And I want the Renton City Council to understand when we are talking about black issues and we are talking about black transgender issues, we should ensure that our language is going to be wholly inclusive to them. So, I urge the council to add gender identity and expression to the listed classes they have in this resolution to ensure that we are protecting black trans lives as well. Thank you.
Hey, you're muted, Julia.
Next up to speak is Lilia Nichols. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. My name is Lilia Nichols, and I'm a black woman, a nurse, a small business owner here in the city of Renton, and a mother to two black sons. Are you ready for the plot twist? No matter how successful I am, none of those things matter when you have a grown man kneeling on your neck. And it turns out a lot of people waited until 2020 to care about black people. So, if you're new here, now is the time to listen. I support Joseph Todd and my fellow community members fight for change within our community. I believe if there's diversity and inclusion but no equity, then we've done our community a disservice. As a proud black woman, an advocate, and activist, when we talk about injustices, violence, and racism, we are not playing the victim card, but we are merely unearthing the hard truths that we have had to swallow while everyone else gets to dance around the topic. We're done dancing and calling for action. We must start having intentional conversations. These conversations make it uncomfortable, have the conversations anyway. Once you learn how to get uncomfortable, it becomes comfortable eventually. You have to listen to learn, learn to apply, apply to refine, and refine to protect. In a world where the sight of my brown skin could get me killed... In a world where the sight of my brown skin could get me killed, and the overt exhaustion I am feeling trying to convince people why I deserve to live, and in the midst of trying to survive, I would again like to reiterate Joseph Todd's statement and amplify his words. There's not one system where there are no racial disparities. Race is the focus because inequalities do exist. Please be intentional when creating policies of change, making sure that there's representation and creation from the people who live and experience white supremacy and blatant racism daily, right here in our own backyards. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Mina Merchant. Go ahead, Ms. Merchant.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Armando and President Perez and the City Council. Hello to everyone. I just wanted to express my support for the comments of the various members of the community that have spoken today, including Joseph and Dr. Linda, Mr. Larry Gossett, Anton, and other members of the community. And just reiterate how important it is to use language that centers, it centers around addressing anti-racism, especially to do specifically with Black Indigenous people of culture, and our people of color in our resolutions, in our other administrative documents that we have for this city that inform how policy actually becomes action. So I'd like to just make sure my support is known for that. The second thing I would like to mention is I would love to check in with all of you about the Black Lives Matter mural, which I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago. I am in the process of writing the application to submit to the Renton Municipal Arts Commission for a grant for the project. However, last time I did speak here, Mayor Pavone, you did indicate that you'd sent the mural idea to various departments at the city office and to discover whether it was really feasible and where it was feasible to have the mural. I'd love to know if there's an update on that. I haven't heard anything else recently. And I did want to make sure you all knew that I have spent a couple of weeks speaking to various members of the local community, many Black members of the community, and the resounding feeling that I'm here to report is that this mural has to happen, it's extremely important, and that most people that I've spoken to have expressed a concern that it's taking a long time to get official approval, and they would very much love to see it happen. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you so much.
Okay, if there's anyone else that has not already addressed the council that would like to speak, please raise your hand. Lenissa Youngquist, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Is it possible that I can yield my time to Krista Strasba and then have my time back? I think she got overlooked.
Actually, she did not get overlooked. She was given time and she gave it to somebody else. Did you want to address the council?
I will yield my time back to her if that's possible. Is that possible?
Ms. Youngquist, did you want to address the council?
I will.
Go ahead.
Mayor and council members, my name is Lenissa Youngquist, and I want...
You were muted.
Go ahead. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, I'm Lenissa Youngquist, and I wanted to thank Dr. Linda Smith and Joe Todd for their comments and affirm that their comments are absolutely intentional, that we as a group, as citizens, are asking that the changes for the United Growth of Inclusion in our city be intentional for Black Lives Matter movement. While I appreciate the effort to create equality for all, I ask that the language not be vague, to lead with race. Race is the focus of true diversity and inclusion programs. Say it to the public and make it your purpose and your promise. I believe in the values and the goals of the written King County Alliance for Justice and Written Residents for Change represent. I'm requesting your explicit use of anti-racist language in city documents, including the business plan, resolution, and an ordinance for budget. Please do not approve or vote on documents that evade acknowledgement of harm done to Black residents, historically and presently. Please make sure the budget line systems align with the city's published purpose to provide a safe, healthy, welcoming atmosphere for community members, many of whom are Black. As we've attended many of these meetings in the last few weeks, we've listened with you as Black residents have shared their examples of inappropriate police behavior, of pedestrians spitting on a car, and parents fearing for their children's lives. I've noticed those calls for the city to affirm Black Lives Matter, though through art and policy have been entertained but quickly shuffled back to the broader conversations focusing only on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Just today, I was made aware of another incident in Renton where two Black mothers have been made feel unsafe in their own homes because of racial slurs and "All Lives Matter" rhetorical presence in their apartment complex, which I know already posts equal opportunity type language. They cannot let their children play outside unattended and rush inside as quickly as they can after routine trips to the grocery store. Of course, you'll also remember the anti-Black sentiments of the hate group who infiltrated pride events at the Fairwood Library last year and the squasticus painted on the back of turtles in Coulomb Park. Each of these are examples of anti-Black racism in Renton. We can no longer operate, assuming our city is different, and basing our decisions on the Golden Rule because it would only perpetuate an imbalance of power that exists in historically white institutions like city government. We must instead elevate our thinking and process to the Platinum Rule. The term was coined by David Kerpen and shared with me recently by Lauren Kite, a Seattle-based facilitator and co-host of Virtual White Caucus Seattle. The Platinum Rule requires that we treat people with dignity and respect on their terms, not our own. It requires we believe residents when they say, "We are not safe," and then we act accordingly. In summary, my request is that you do not rush the process of creating policies that we share residents' experiences for years to come. Take the time to hear your residents, believe the people who we've made public comments before and after George Floyd's murder. Believe them, even if, especially if, their lived experience does not mirror your own. Leadership for justice is leadership that intentionally centers race. Thank you.
Next I have Dina Roscoe. Go ahead, Dina.
Hi, my name is Dr. Dina Michelle Roscoe. I'm a Renton resident since 2005. I'm born and raised in the area and grew up in Renton schools. I want to just validate everything that the previous commenters have stated with a special mention of the second wound. The second wound is something in psychology that happens when the Platinum Rule is violated, when people do not respond with a commitment to action or belief of what a sufferer, of someone who has suffered abuse, whether individually in a home or structurally with racism, when they vocalize their experience, the second wound happens a lot when people invalidate it or dismiss it or even blame them for it. And I just want to encourage this validation piece is so important to reducing harm, reducing potential unrest, and further risk to people's lives by just responding and taking the time to listen to what our community leaders are saying. And to that end, I wanted to encourage an idea in how this would look, I don't know how this would pan out, but the idea of a delegate for different neighborhoods in the city and different cultural community groups, and especially our Black leaders, to help inform the language of this ordinance. They don't feel left out of the process, and so that you all can have a sense of consensus over how the language is written. And I also want to speak to the need for budgeting for community health responses. I read some information recently about less than 1% of many cities' crimes that are recorded or called into the police department are violent crimes. Many of them are disturbances or mental health-related or something that's much more minor. And so I don't know what the numbers are in Renton, only Seattle was about 1.3%. So there's definitely a need for community health responses for those types of calls that are not violent crimes, instead of perhaps the police responding, perhaps it could be trained social workers or community leaders or even a peer support system depending on the need. So I would love for the council mayor to think through some ideas on how future budgeting can look for supporting community health and safety. And the last thing I wanted to say is I'm a mother of a four-year-old boy, and his favorite colors are brown and rainbow. And he loves, when the pandemic's over, he wants to go have everyone and play. And I just would really like to have a sense of a future vision for our children, that they don't need to deal with this challenge of what our neglect has caused and all the suffering that we're going through right now because of structural ostracism, which is how I describe racism. And I would really love it if we could just hear this urgent appeal and respond and validate what people are saying. Thank you for your time.
Okay, is there anyone that has not addressed the council that would like to speak?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Julia. Good evening, Mayor Pavone, President Perez, council members. I want to thank everyone who's spoken up until this point, and I would like to add a few comments regarding how I observe power to be playing out during this very meeting. Earlier this week, I sent a document to council members, including the mayor, including "The Characteristics of White Supremacy Culture" by Kenneth Jones and Timo Okun. It was published in 2001, and it's important to note that we've had it for 20 years, not specifically the council, but this knowledge, this research that many Black and Brown members of society have bared for too long, has been available to us for that long. And I just want to point out a couple of characteristics of white supremacy that plays out on a systemic level in meetings like this. One is sense of urgency. And as I understand, the council is up against some deadlines. They need to write documents that will be published and will impact the lives of our residents for the next two and up to six years. These are really important decisions. This language is very important, being explicit and using anti-racist language is very important. But if we operate from a place of pure sense of urgency that wants to check the box and publish the document without actually hearing the lived experience of those people who are telling you their stories before and after George Floyd's death, the box doesn't mean anything. And so I'm asking that we lean in, that we analyze together what's happening. Do we have sense of urgency around publishing documents that we believe look good to the community? Or is our sense of urgency around truly capturing the lived experiences of our Black and Indigenous residents and making the changes that we need to see? Secondly, another characteristic of white supremacy that plays out is power hoarding. I understand that the way this meeting functions is not that different than how many city council meetings function and how many school boards even function. But the fact that no one sitting at the dais or in this specific contest at home is accountable to responding to us in real time is a form of power hoarding. It separates us and it shifts power and allows some people to hold it while other people can't have it. Also, the way that we're taking turns at this meeting exemplifies power hoarding. The reason why we yield time is because in order to make the changes that we need, in order to make power more equitable, we must center Black voices. We must center those voices who have the lived experience to guide us on this journey that we hope to all be on together. And so, yes, when I yield my time, I suppose in a way it could be viewed as giving it to someone else, or we could all look at it as a way to center the voices that truly need to be privileged in this conversation and be mindful of how we share that time in return. So thank you again for listening. I hope that council members and the mayor and perhaps even the chief of police will go ahead and read that document that I sent earlier this week. Again, it's called "The Characteristics of White Supremacy Culture" by Kenneth Jones and Timo Okun. And as we commit to this work, it's really important that each of us on an individual level are unpacking the ways we've internalized white supremacies so that we can know better and do better. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has not addressed the council that would like to address the council? Please raise your hand. Seeing no more, Mr. Mayor, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank all the participants. We do appreciate the inputs. And Councilmember Corman, you would like the floor.
Oh, well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the comments tonight, as I've appreciated all the comments we've received over the months, the weeks, especially recently. And I just personally don't see why we would need to rush the proclamation. If there's an opportunity to get, you know, some more verbiage in it that really resonates with the community and sets us on the right path, I just feel like, and I know I'm not alone, I think I want this to be really right. I want it to be the right product, not a rushed product. So I just want to say that and thank everybody for their comments.
Councilmember Van, did you raise your hand?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just want to echo my colleague, Councilmember Corman, that I want to, I thank all community members for coming out and commenting. And certainly, I see I tie with Councilwoman Corman, there is no rush in the process. It's really important to center community, community concerns. And certainly, it's really, you know, we're here representing our communities, so it's not necessarily something that we really need to rush. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on? So there is no rush from the administration. The resolution is in place to pass the business plan. So if there are changes to the recitals that the council would like to make and move on from there, that's totally fine with the administration. We can talk about that when we get there. Okay, next up is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Perez.
I move that the council concur with the consent agenda, Spanish.
I second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if you saw my hand, but I would like to move to amend the, or pull item A and move to amend some information from that.
Item A is the meeting minutes from last week. You think so? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President.
I will amend my motion. So I move to the council concur with the consent agenda minus item A.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Perez and seconded by Councilmember Corman that we, that the council concur with the consent agenda minus item A. Councilmember Van?
We could vote on that.
We can vote, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, Councilmember Van?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend the attendance portion, and of course, it's an honest mistake, but the role call, my name is not listed there. And so I move to amend to add my name into the section where it was Councilmember Ed Prince, because I believe that Councilmember Prince was absent, and I was present. So I moved to amend... So I moved to amend to add my name in.
I second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Van and seconded by Councilmember Corman that we move the that we amend the council meeting minutes for July 6th to show that Councilmember Prince was absent and Councilmember Van was present. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yes.
I I just want to apologize to Councilmember Van. That was a an error on my part, so it was not intentional.
I don't want to explain it out, but.
Yeah, it was it was an error.
Thank you, Mr. Sead.
Thank you for catching that, Councilmember Van.
And Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilmember Corman? It wasn't quite clear to me, do we need, so that was a motion to amend the minutes. Do we also need a motion then to pass the minutes? I'm not clear on that.
You're correct.
Okay.
I would I would move that we approve the amended, the minutes as amended.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved that we pass the amended minutes by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember Van. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Okay, motion carries. Sorry about that, that was a little clumsy on my part, but we will move on anyway. Okay, next up is unfinished business. Council President Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van? Yours, though.
You're muted.
Yeah.
Sorry, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Halloran?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince?
Mr. Mayor, you already know. Finance Committee has some committee reports.
Okay, Finance Committee committee report. Approval of Claims and Payroll Vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable, total payment of $7,624,001.66 for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers. And two payroll, total payment of $1,420,454.60 for payroll vouchers that include 587 direct deposits and three checks. This is for the June 1st through June 15th pay period.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince?
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
All right, the next report is regarding the City Clerk's Office reorganization. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the City Clerk Division reorganization as follows. Convert the Assistant Public Records Officer A20 Step E to Deputy City Clerk Public Records Officer M24 Step E. Convert Public Records Specialist A11 to Public Records Specialist A17. This is a vacant position currently. Convert the Enterprise Content Manager/Deputy Public Deputy City Clerk M24 Step E to Enterprise Content Manager M27 Step E. And then establish City Clerk Specialist Series by converting two City Clerk Specialist positions A11 Step E to City Clerk Specialist II positions A15 Step E. The estimated net cost for the change for 2020 is $17,051.21, including salary and full benefits, which will be absorbed by the division's current professional services budget, making the request budget neutral. Annual cost after the vacant position is filled is approximately $55,000 annually and will be absorbed by the division's current professional services budget. The effective date for this reorg is August 1st, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Prince?
Well, I'd like to say that we gave Jason a hard time in finance. We really didn't have any questions about his reorg. And so with that, I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van. The council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. The next report is regarding a Water Quality Grant Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the Water Quality Grant Agreement, WQC 2020 Renton 00016, with the Department of Ecology to accept $187,500 in grant funds for the Stormwater Facility retrofit study project. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince? Finance Committee always likes getting money. So with that, I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van. Does the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
I have two more for Finance Committee. This one is regarding the 2020 second quarter budget adjustment and fee schedule adjustment. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment in the 2019-2020 budget appropriations in the amount of, I believe that's negative $11,881,437, with the total amended budget to be $833,690,676 for the biennium. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence also in the staff recommendation to approve an amendment in the 2019-2020 fee schedule as noted in the redline version of the attached fee schedule. And the committee further recommends that the ordinance regarding the 2020 second quarter budget amendment be presented for first reading and the resolution for the fee schedule amendment be presented for reading and adoption. I'd like to make a clerical note that the fee schedule will be adopted when the ordinance is is read the second time, which will be at the next meeting. That is all.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince? I move that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the final Finance Committee report is regarding another grant agreement for the police department. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the BJA Fiscal Year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program Grant Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice to receive $100,954 in grant funds for the procurement of personal protective equipment, PPE, cleaning supplies, and other various equipment and supplies if they contribute to the prevention, preparation, or response to the coronavirus pandemic. The committee further recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Prince? Very important, this is very important, and my comment before applies, we do like getting free money. So with that, council, I ask that council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have a Planning and Development Committee report to present.
Okay, this report is regarding the Shoreline Master Program amendments. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the amendments to the Shoreline Master Program. The committee further recommends that the ordinance be presented for first reading.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Corman? Can I move that council concur in the committee report?
It's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Council President Perez, that the council concur with the committee report. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, on to legislation. First up is resolutions.
Okay, we have two, but it sounds like one may be pulled. The first resolution is regarding the King County Hazard Mitigation Plan. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the 2020 through 2025 King County Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and authorizing the city's annex thereto and adopting the City of Renton Plan Annex.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Perez?
I'm, the resolution to be adopted is read?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the resolution be adopted and read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Okay, as mentioned, the next resolution is regarding adopting the business plan and strengthening our stand against racism in support of racial equity.
Okay.
Councilmember Corman, did you want to pull that item from the agenda?
Yes, and I'm not quite sure the right parliamentary approach, if it involves tabling it till the next meeting or, if I may, just take the floor for a second. I guess I I should I should have added that when I talked about taking extra time, I I commend the people that did work on this. I think it's a really good product so far. I'm also excited that it gave, it it provided some some content that the public could then sort of formulate comments on and see what they felt was was missing. So it just seems like it's coming together. So in a way, I'm tempted to ask if the original authors maybe could could digest some of the comments we heard tonight and and make a second proposal. These things are always kind of hard to work on with with seven of us. The seven of us can really only, saying this kind of for the benefit of the public as well, but we can only work together in these public meetings. So we could, we could try and do the wordsmithing now, but that would probably be very inefficient.
Send it back to administration?
That's kind of where I'm going with that. And so if if, I guess, an appropriate motion maybe would be to to move that the the resolution and the business plan go back to the administration to incorporate some of the content that we've heard during tonight's audience comment.
Second.
I would, yeah.
Okay, then moved by Councilmember Corman and seconded by Councilmember Van, that the Resolution 4114 be referred back to administration to add some of the details that were discussed in tonight's audience comment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Mayor?
Okay. All right, on to ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
You may.
I think Councilmember Prince wants to talk.
Councilmember Prince?
I was just going to say, were we, was there going to be any discussion or we were just going to vote? That's what I was asking, because you had people who had their hands raised.
Oh, I didn't see any of the hands raised. Geez, everybody's got their hands raised. All right. Let's start with you, Councilmember Prince.
So I I have a question, and I have no problem pushing this off. I guess my question is, what is the intent of this resolution? Because when we talked about the business plan a few weeks ago, I remember saying, the real product is the business plan. The resolution is just the vehicle to get to adopting the business plan. So my question is, what is the real vehicle here? Because to me, it's making sure we have a business plan that addresses everything that the residents talked about tonight, not necessarily a resolution that is going to not, is not going to be seen again after we publish the business plan. Because the business plan is everywhere in the city, in all the city businesses and all the offices. So I guess my question is, what's the, what is the work product here? Is it the resolution or is it the business plan?
Well, what I heard tonight was that it was the recitals that needed to be changed. Is that correct? Councilmember Corman?
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's what I heard. I mean, I, Councilmember Prince makes a very good point, and I I don't want to, you know, I don't want to ignore that. But in terms of, I I felt like the public had reviewed the the proclamation or the resolution that goes with the business plan and felt like there were some some improvements that could be made to it, and I just wanted to be responsive to that. I I did refer both the, the motion that we passed refers both the proclamation and the business plan. So I think if if someone in the administration felt like there was a comment that would lead them to propose a different business plan, that might make sense, too. But it seemed like the speakers were mostly talking about the recitations in the proclamation part.
Mr. Mayor, and I'm really not trying to be obtuse here, but to me, the resolution is a symbolic document. The business plan is the meat, where the structural change is going to happen. So for me, it's more important, the, like I said, the resolution, I have no problem taking time to go over it, reword it or whatever, but the actual doing things that we're going to hold folks accountable to are in the business plan.
Correct. Councilmember McGurven?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and sorry if I was a little leggy. And you, did you call me twice? I totally missed that earlier, is that what happened?
Yeah, I was hoping that you were going to just pass over on that one.
Okay, that's okay. I was like, where did I have my hand raised? Not realizing. Anyway, that's not why I raised my hand this time. I'm glad we got a chance to discuss it. I was certainly willing to vote on the previous motion, because I think putting it off a week doesn't hurt us. I do agree with Councilmember Prince, the meat is the business plan, but I don't think taking a week to, if we heard from several members of the public, that this language is important and it matters, and I don't necessarily disagree with them. And so if there's the chance, I don't think we're ever going to get it perfect, but I think based off of what we heard, I think we can get it better with, and we should, we should listen to that input if they took the time to come and and speak to us about it tonight. I certainly resonated from on the, I think it was on page two, on on the idea of just small things like saying gender identity, or instead of gender, I think is what I heard. So I think those tweaks, in parts, throughout the document, makes sense that we should do that, because at the end of the day, yes, the business plan matters, but with the words that go into it, even if it is a document no one views, that's that's the founding principle of it. So I I would say let's, well, I don't know if we already voted on the motion, but I would take the time to get more input. And certainly, we welcome in input on the business plan itself as well, too, if community members have input on that. Thank you.
Three weeks.
Councilmember Van?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And someone who originally made this motion, I do hear, and I understand what Councilmember Prince is saying, and I really just echo Councilmember McGurven, because what I hear is, yes, recitals, but also in the business plan itself, and just from our conversation from community of the whole, I believe, and if I made it wrong, I can't recall it, then please correct me, Councilmember Benedetti, but you made a comment, a suggestion, that perhaps we should put the terminology of anti-racism or anti-racist into our business plan, and it's nowhere in here. And so if this is the meat of our paper, the meat of our plan, and it's not in here, and I had a two-hour meeting with staff regarding that as well, and I think that could be an honest mistake, but certainly, the information is not on the business plan, and there's some other information as well. I myself honestly was going to make an amendment if we were to pass it, just because I remember that. And with Councilmember Corman, thank you so much for you mentioning last time that we have to be thoughtful and intentional with this process, and of course, looking through our archaic laws and policy, and I think that was also missing in our business plan. And so I think there's huge things that, I think it's great strides, I thank you staff and all community and members and council members who've worked through this, but I think that there could think, we could also improve on some things in a week, like Councilmember McGurven said, wouldn't really hurt.
Okay, Councilmember, I'm not sure if Councilmember Benedetti or Halloran, raise your hand first, but I'll go on alphabet order, so Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, thank you. Actually, Councilmember Vaughn recognized what it was that, where it was that I was feeling some friction here, which is that I felt that there was a lot that had been done with regard to the recitals, but that the language that was in the business plan had not been addressed to the degree that the recitals had, and that that really it is the business plan that we're going to act on, and that really becomes the, as Councilmember Prince had stated, the meat. And I also wanted to acknowledge that it isn't a week, it's three, because, and so that should give some time to go back and to really massage this for another, another hearing when we get back from our council break. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I just wanted to clarify that we are not meeting again until August 3rd.
Thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. At this point, I would like to hear from Benita, Mr. Mayor, if it's possible, because I did talk to her about specifically adding the word anti-racism into the business plan. And the explanation that she gave me was very logical. So if Benita is available, I really would like to hear why their recommendation of the administration was to put together a business plan without specifically saying anti-racism.
Yes, let's bring the expert in. Sonya, there you are. Thank you.
Thank you. I always cringe a little bit when someone says I'm an expert. I embrace the work that I do as a consultant in the spirit that, like everyone else, I'm on a journey, that none of us is perfect, and that we all have a long way to go. And that this work toward racial equity is really a journey, and it's not a destination. And so for me, and I would just have to say, I can only speak for my own personal philosophy. When we talk anti-racism, we don't, it does not give us a path forward. You know, I can say, I'm against asparagus, but what do I eat? And so anti-racism, from my personal experience, is a definitive term. In what's to say, you know, we want to strive for practices that achieve a goal that are not anti-racist, but achieve a specific goal. And so in, at least in my personal experience, if we're creating a path forward, it's about what is our future direction? And that was the thinking that I shared with Council President.
Okay, thank you. We have more raised hands. Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in terms of the language for that bullet, this is what I heard last time. And I think that, you know, yes, anti-racism is kind of broader term. And what I would suggest, because there are two words that are inclusion in there. And just in that alone, I thought that was kind of interesting. But instead of anti-racism, how about anti-racist? Because, I mean, there's a whole mind shift, right? We're really talking about dismantling racism and really committing to ending structural racism and achieving racial equity. We can't just include, but we really have to mindset of anti-racist. Like really continually work on ourselves, as well as our structural, our systems, right? And so we can feel that we include people through our policy. But as we hear from community, what is the mindset that we are really trying to achieve? And also, what is the policy, right? So that, I know that we did mention that city confirmed, hereby declares Renton an anti-racist city. So that's the description, right? So that's something. And then also what Council McGurven, Councilmember McGurven mentioned was regarding to gender identity expression in the resolution. I think it's also important to put that into the business plan. Because if our business plan is our, we all, you're kind of a vision and our go-to, I think that these languages should basically be across the board the same.
Council, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Benita, for sharing that knowledge. I always appreciate your voice in this table. So I agree with Councilmember Prince. I don't think that we, right now is the time to, you know, just dissect again our business plan and go word by word. I do agree that in the resolution, we did add the word anti-racism. And I don't think this is, the reason why I asked Benita is because I don't think, is that we are afraid to use a wrong language, but, I mean, a strong language. But what I do believe is that what a lot of our constituents just expressed to us, that words have different meanings. And when you use the different words that we put in the business plan, it has to be very, very, very intentional. So I don't have any problems to add in the word anti-racism in our anti-racist in the business plan. I just want to be very, very clear that I'm more towards what Benita say, that is what the actions are we gonna take as a city, which is more important. What are we doing to dismantle racism? And the resolution, the resolution does add a lot of purportions about, and specifically talk about black people and indigenous people and people of color. And it goes a little bit beyond that about immigrants and refugees, which is a little bit different. But anyway, I'm just giving my two cents. But if we're gonna send this back, I totally agree with Councilmember Corman that it should not be, we should not time it, it could be back in three weeks. But if it needs more time, I don't have any problems with that.
Okay. Councilmember Prince, did you have something to say? I thought you raised your hand, okay.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I think we're on to ordinances. No hands, right? Okay, perfect.
Are we, you ready?
Jason, you're back up again. We are on to ordinances for first reading.
Okay, so I have two ordinances for fir-, oops. Look at that.
Lost it. There we go.
Yeah, muted, sorry. Two ordinances for first reading. The first is regarding the budget amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton Fiscal Years 2019-2020 by annual budget as adopted by ordinance number 5898 in the amount of negative $11,881,437.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor. Councilman Corman.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that we move the ordinance on the next council meeting for final adoption. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next one is a little long. So this is regarding the Shoreline Management Program. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections, well, sections 4-3, 4-9, 4-10, and the definition of buffer shorelines in section 4-11, the definitions of developable area and development in section 41140, the definition of floodway in section 41160, the definition of lot measurements in sections 411120, and the definition for RMC 4390 Shoreline Master Program Regulations Use Only of setback in section 411190 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending the city's Shoreline Master Program Regulations, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Corman.
I move this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
And Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Corman.
If I may, just for the benefit of people not on Planning and Development Committee. So the Shoreline Management Regulations were difficult. 10 years ago or so, there was a lot of controversy as we worked the Shoreline Master Program. I'm happy to say that this group of changes have been pretty well vetted with the community, and most of these sort of make it more workable. They also bring it in line with learning that's happened in other communities. So we're talking about regulations that just, you know, clarify how much of your doc can be updated without triggering, you know, regulations and things like that. But for the most part, they've been vetted. I'm not gonna say everybody, everybody's happy with every one of them. But, and I also just want to commend the staff on how hard they worked on getting this group of regulations together, getting the community together. And so with that, I appreciate a positive vote on the motion.
Thank you for that explanation. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Okay, we are on to new business.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, there's.
Didn't come to the next page.
Yeah, we have one more ordinance. It's for first reading and advancement to second and final reading. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting an interim zoning control in response to the phased opening of businesses following the COVID-19 declared public health emergency, temporarily establishing a permit to be known as an economic recovery revocable right-of-way permit for businesses, temporarily allowing economic recovery signs for businesses, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Perez.
I move the ordinance to be passed to the second and final reading this evening.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, and seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be moved to second and final reading tonight. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, I'm gonna read it a second time. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting an interim zoning control in response to the phased opening of businesses following the COVID-19 declared public health emergency, temporarily establishing a permit to be known as an economic recovery revocable right-of-way permit for businesses, temporarily allowing economic recovery signs for businesses, providing for severability, declaring an emergency, and establishing an immediate effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President Perez.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Perez, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Any discussion? Okay, this ordinance takes a roll call.
Council President Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Councilmember Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurven.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
And Councilmember Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, of ayes.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to new business. Council President Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will not have meetings on July 20 and July 27. So I will announce that on Monday, 3, 2020, at 5:30 p.m., we will have our committee of the whole via video conference with one item on the agenda. This is COVID-19 Human Services Update, including long-term plans for shelters and feeding programs. I also would like to announce that on August 3, 2020, at 7 p.m., we will have our city council meeting via video conference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van. You're muted.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Actually, you have a meeting to the council.
Oh, yes, I can't access my email right now. Hold on.
Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to assist if I can.
Yes, if you can. For some reason, I can't put this up.
Monday, August 3rd.
Councilmember McGurven.
Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee, I think Councilmember Van was trying to say is the Community Service Committee, which was scheduled for Monday, August 3rd, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
You do have.
No new business? No new business, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
You have new business.
You swing and a miss.
You have a Utilities Committee meeting.
Utilities Committee to announce.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember McGurven, can we get an assist?
I could do all of the meetings tonight.
Please.
Well, what I'm looking at, it looks like there's gonna be a Utilities Committee meeting on Monday, August 3, at 4 p.m. via video conference.
Thank you.
And there's two items on the agenda that I see. And the chair is certainly welcome to concur with this, which is that change order per water system plan update and emerging issues in utilities.
I concur, thank you very kindly.
No problem.
And since we're at you, do you have any new business due?
Why, yes, I do. First, before I get into meeting announcements, I will definitely apologize for suggesting we'd be bringing it back next week. That'll teach me to look at, to not look at calendars, and now I'm all about the calendars.
Yeah.
That was instant karma for correcting the mayor earlier on calling him a twice, I suppose. So, but I get more floor time now, so it's good. So I'm just gonna announce the Translation Committee that was scheduled for Monday, August 3, has been canceled, and that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, McGurven. Okay, and Councilmember Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will meet on Monday, August 3, at 4:45 p.m. via video conference. We have two items on the agenda, vouchers and Public Works Department reorganization. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm looking at exactly what Councilmember McGurven's looking at, and I can say I don't have any new business. Is that right, Mr. McGurven?
You got it right. Exactly. All right, that concludes new business. What's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by everybody else, that we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
Enjoy the break, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember McGurven.